Calling to order, the municipality of Monroeville's citizens' night and agenda-setting meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. It is approximately 7:00 PM. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Mayor Greesong.
Here.
Mr. Hizzy.
Here.
Mr. Poach. Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Crutt.
Here.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Biondo.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Ratcher.
Here.
Ms. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Yugus.
Here.
Mr. Sutlak.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Welcome. This is our agenda-setting meeting for the municipality of Monroeville. Tonight is not a voting meeting. There are no votes that are taken this evening. So what we're doing is discussing items that we will be considering for this month at next Tuesday's council regular meeting at 7:00 PM. That's when we vote. Tonight is not a voting meeting, but it's a tonight for citizens to discuss any municipal matter. Mr. Graziano, our manager, is out of town. I'm joined today by our assistant manager, M.K. Lang, and Mr. Poach is out of town unfortunately as well. So before we get to our citizens' comments, just something I'd like to address that was recently in the news, which was the grant application by Cypress Equities on behalf of Walmart to demolish the Monroeville Mall. They are applying for, they applied for $7.5 million. It's a matching grant, so they would, the total project would be $15 million to demolish the mall. At this point, Monroeville, the municipality, hasn't had any kind of site plan, any kind of application by Cypress or Walmart. They applied for this. We did know that they were applying for this grant. There is a short window when they can apply. It was a 30-day window for the past month, so that window's closed. If they didn't apply in that window, they would have to wait till next year. Once again, we haven't had any kind of applications or site plans from Cypress of what the final product is going to look like over at the mall property. Cypress assures us, as we've been saying with multiple meetings, that they are going to have open-house forums for community members to come and to learn about the project whenever they're ready. Unfortunately, it is taking much, much, much longer than what they expected, primarily because of the lease agreements that they have to go through, through all the merchants and tenants at the mall currently. That is the major delay that they are having. What I can say, and what they have told us, is that, yes, Walmart is going to be part of this project, but they also tell us that it's 25% of it's going to be Walmart, and the other 75% is going to be other retail, restaurant, entertainment. They are working with current tenants at the mall and current merchants at the mall to be a part of the new development. I do not know, we do not know who they are or what they're doing. They are keeping that under wraps. But they are definitely working through many, many steps that it's going to take before it gets to any kind of action plan by the municipality. So this will eventually be in front of our planning commission and in front of council, like a council work session like tonight, and a voting meeting for council. But they are also assure us, and they've promised us, that they will be having open-house forums, and that is something that we absolutely will require, because they have been telling us this this whole time. I will not place any of these items on the agenda, on any agenda, until they do have that open-house forum. I have no reason to not believe Cypress. They've been pretty upfront with us as far as the process. Once again, they say that it's taking way longer than what they anticipated, but we are very excited about the redevelopment of that property. The 186 acres, we really look forward to it. It is a very long, long process. It is probably a four-year timetable for the redevelopment of that site. So we anxiously wait to hear what they have to say and what their plans are. We will put that out to the public as soon as we know more information. But the grant application was through the state. The county gets involved. The municipality is not involved as far as that goes, and we will anxiously wait to see what the lawmakers at the state decide on an application such as this. It's my understanding that it's, these things are connected to the state budget, which is currently a little bit of a standstill right now. So this is going to be a long process. But as far as plans for the Monroeville Mall, we don't know. What we do know, which is very apparent by what they have applied for with the grant, is that they plan to fully demolish the building and start from scratch and redevelop the whole site. We are very excited about what it's going to look like ultimately, and we can't wait to hear about how it's going to look. But as soon as we do, we will let everyone know. And that's all I have at this point as far as that matter. But I am going to open the floor for citizens' night. This is a time for residents and taxpayers to address council for any municipal item. We ask you to keep your comments to a five-minute time limit, just to kind of keep the meeting going, and keep the meeting going, so we can get through everybody. Everyone will have their chance to speak. No one will be rushed, other than your five minutes. I'm going to hold you to that. But everyone will have an opportunity to speak. If you did not sign in, you will have a chance to do so. I'll make sure you have a chance to do so, and I'll open the floor for citizens' night. So if you'd like to state your name for the record, please.
Bruce Walker. I'm with the Monroeville Historical Society, and I want to thank the municipality, in particular the municipal workers.
He's trying to get a job for Channel 11.
Yes, very good.
Reporting live from Monroeville, I'm Bruce Walker. Go ahead, Bruce, please.
The municipality and the municipal workers, in particular Mike Strom's crew, for the excellent support for our annual heritage day, Saturday, the 27th. It went well. We had a near-record crowd, a record profit, beautiful weather, so thank you again for that. And also, our next event is the annual Christmas tree lighting, which will be Tuesday before Thanksgiving, November 25th, starting at 6:30. I think you've agreed to give a few words.
I'll be there.
Thank you very much. That's, I don't need to four, five minutes.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate what you do for the Historical Society. I'll leave the floor open. Just, once you get up there, you can state your name for the record. If you could just stand off to that, this side of the podium, so the microphones can pick you up.
Hi, my name's, good evening, everyone. My name's Cyan Etchegary. I live on Evergreen Drive, ever in Garden City of Monroeville. I'm a very long-term resident of here, and my family also. I think Monroeville's wonderful. I wouldn't be moving out of here, probably never. Things have happened lately that it seems like part of us are getting sort of the broad deal on things. This business with the construction with the Parkway, I believe the people living on Evergreen Drive were really at a lot of air danger and everything when we were trying to, when they were doing their construction. Pulling out of our driveways was very hazardous. Evergreen Drive is, the lower part of it, is like, if you had a lot of mud on it, it would be a good cross-country racetrack, because it comes up a good angle over, angle up, crest of hill down. It's no stop signs at all, and that's what they use it for, across roads, you know, cross through over into Center Road, and also to get by the lights that they put on Old William Penn when they were shut, when they were shut down to one lane. So everyone cuts up our street in the morning and in the evening, and it was just terrible. It really was. I'm glad it's nearing the end. I hope there's more thought put into the detour when they do it the next time, because no one was really considering that. But we lived through it, and we'll do it again. Also, since there aren't any speed bump, or any stop signs on Evergreen, if they could put, like over at the high school, those black, what are they, rubber or something that they put down during the good years of the month, they put those down to keep people slowed down. I think if they could put those on, across our hill in the good weather months, that would really help to slow down people and prevent people from getting hit or near hit when they're getting out of their driveways. I know years ago, this is an ongoing fight, and years ago we tried, and we were told that they could not put speed bumps on Evergreen because it impeded snow removal. Well, those removable ones would be perfect for our street. It really would. And I'm sad about the mall, and I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you sign in, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
State your name.
My name's Gary Pogliano. I live at 3676 Logan's Ferry Road, Monroeville. Anyway, good evening, council members. Okay, I've got my little notes here. I lived at Logan's Ferry for most of my life, nearly 69 years as a Monroeville resident. I've always been proud to call this community home. I'm here tonight because deeply concerned about the chronic speeding and dangerous driving that have plagued Logan's Ferry Road for more than two decades. Over the past 20 years, my property alone has suffered estimated $300,000 in damages to vehicles, landscaping, personal property. Several of my neighbors have experienced similar issues. We had countless near misses, fences taken out, cars ending up in yards, my brick pillar, mailboxes, decorated walls destroyed more than once. The most recent accident occurred February 15th, 2025, around 10:30 AM. Thankfully, no one was hurt, but it was far too close for comfort. My partner and our dogs had just gotten out of the car about four minutes before the collision. While we were only suffered damage to the vehicle and property, that situation could have been easily in serious injury or worse. It's a reminder of just how dangerous this road has become. So far, we're fortunate that it's only been property damage, not personal injury or loss of life. But I ask you, how long can we count on this luck? It's not a matter if another crash happens. It's a matter of how much more loss of potential harm, or what will we endure next time. The danger extends beyond drivers. It threatens walkers, joggers, bicyclists, and every resident who lives and walks along this stretch of road, which many of you folks are here that do. Well, we're looking for, after years of frustration, many of my neighbors believe this situation is clear and achievable. We're asking broadly to take the following actions to improve safety on Logan's Ferry Road. Install multiple speed bumps along Ferry's Road. Add a stop sign at the intersection along Logan's Ferry and Edge Meeting. Include warning signage, flashing digital speed indicators, remind drivers of their speed. Install guide rails in vulnerable sections to protect homes and property from vehicles leaving the roadway. Increase speed enforcement, which Chief Cole, they did it for two weeks right after the accident, and they've got close to 40 citations that those two weeks' time period. Soon as the police officers were gone, right through the stop signs again. Buses go, I mean, it's very, very dangerous. Anyway, we, one afternoon, we got over 30 signatures from residents who live from the speed bumps down. We're not asking for anything unreasonable, just the basic safety, peace of mind that every resident deserves in their own neighborhood. Please, let's not wait until someone is seriously injured or killed before action is taken. Help us make Logan's Ferry safer for drivers, for residents, and the entire Monroeville community. Thank you for your time and listening to our concerns. And I have signed petitions here. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave the floor open.
Do you need this back?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Lois Drumheller, Monroeville. I'm going to address something that the mayor touched on. However, Mr. Mayor, there is also a public comment period to the, this is a redevelopment assistant capital program. It is a Commonwealth grant program. There are many counties, the entire state, that are there asking for money. And what I did is I brought some information with me, and I want to let citizens know that because of this comment period, the comment period goes till October the 30th. From September 30th, the number of people that were submitting grants for all kinds of projects, that included the 184-acre site of Monroeville Mall, which was purchased February for $34 million US dollars. And the real estate developer who's coordinating the redevelopment of that to a town center, Cypress Equities, announced in June that they stand ready to invest, it was a half-a-billion dollars, into the development of the mall. And Walmart has the means of that. Walmart is a company that had a fiscal year for 2024. I think they had over $600 billion that they had in revenue. So they could well afford all aspects of the, not only redevelopment, but of the demolition. What they're asking taxpayers in the state for is $7.5 million. That's our money in Pennsylvania, so that they could get matching funds, as you said, to doing the demolition of the mall. But they have the means for it. So based on the needs and the means of grant applications, I'm going to, you know, I already wrote in my public comment that I recommend rejection of that grant application. The people that are handling it, if you look on the website, they'll show you all of the entities that want grant money. And on behalf of the Walmart Corporation, they have something called Southern, no, South Saturn Ridge, and that's the entity that is handling that grant on behalf of Walmart, getting their seven-and-a-half million dollars. You know, there are other things in Allegheny County I think that are better use. And for instance, there's a grant of $3.7 million. That's requested on that grant for one of our nine Allegheny County parks, which is Boys Park. In particular, they want an upgrade to the wave pool, which I think is great use for recreation and enjoyment. So I want to let people know that the people at the public comment for this, you would have to put in your subject line what it's all about, but you can get information exactly from going to the website for the redevelopment assistant capital program, or RACP, grant. And there you will find a link, so you can send comments. If you don't want to be on the internet, you can send comments to Letter and Office of the Budget, and that's in Harrisburg, where all state functions are handled there for grants. Please, I think we need to rise up together and say, no, Walmart, you can afford the seven-and-a-half million dollars for your over half-a-billion-dollar project. And other people in the state can use money more wisely than that. Please, anybody who wants to ask me, I'm in the phone book, and I'll be happy to tell them how to reach for their public comment. But it ends on the 30th of October. Thank you.
I'll leave the floor open.
This is all new to me, so I was thinking on the way over here. Jesus, I hope I don't embarrass myself.
You're going to do just fine, sir. All you got to do is start with, state your name for the record, please.
What do I have to do first?
Say your name.
Justin D'Ambrizio.
And you're a Monroeville resident.
Yes, of course.
Okay, we're off to a good start. So go ahead with your comments.
Okay.
Did you sign in? Yeah.
Have you signed in?
Yeah, I signed in.
Perfect.
All right, I'm ready to go then.
All right.
I'm here to speak in opposition to Sheets building another facility on Old William Penn Highway. When I first heard this news, the first question I had was, why would anyone consider, even consider putting a full-service gas station next to another full-service gas station at this particular location? There is already considerable congestion.
Justin.
At the light.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Pardon me. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, so this is going to be, and you're certainly free to talk about it now. However, I think it'd be better if you wait till we get to the conditional use hearing for this item. That way, it's all in the same hearing. It gets a little confusing, but you're still going to speak about it tonight. But after we get through the citizens' night comments, we're going to move over and speak directly about Sheets, and that'd be the best time for you to talk about Sheets.
Oh, I can, yeah, I didn't understand that. I can do that.
You can just wait for a couple minutes.
So I should wait until the others are finished?
Yeah, unless you want to speak about another municipal matter, you could do that now. But if you want to talk about Sheets, why don't you wait till we get to that, like in, later in the meeting here?
Okay.
Is that okay?
So I'm done here then?
For now. Don't go anywhere, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just everyone's clear about that. If someone wants to speak about Sheets, I would encourage you just to wait until we get to that, that part of the agenda, which will be as soon as we finish up our citizens' night. But I will leave the floor open for regular, the council work session, the citizens' night portion of the meeting, though.
Hi, I'm Judy Randall. I'm also very new at this. I did come for Sheets, but I do have something else that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know about where everyone lives here. I live on, I think, the most beautiful street of Monroeville. I've been here 10 years. In our old home, when I heard a car, that meant I had company. So Monroeville was new to me. There were beautiful neighbors that I had, different things we had to get used to, and I found out, I love it. I could not believe the recreational facilities that you have here, what you offer the community. I talk about it to my family all the time. Extremely impressed. So anyways, what I would like to bring up is something you might not be able to do anything about, but on our beautiful street is a beautiful home that just sits there because the bank doesn't want to do anything with it. Is there anything legally that could be done about this?
What street are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy Randall, Old Haymaker Road.
Old Haymaker Road.
Yeah, so it's been about, I don't, I don't know, the other neighbors would know more because they see it more, because they're right next to it. But the house is destroyed. It's uninhabitable, and it just seems like a beautiful street and beautiful homes. People can take care of their yards, and then in the middle of it is this house that's just, looks awful. Like, I believe there's rats there now.
If you can get us the address, we can have code enforcement look at it for property maintenance violations.
I will do that.
If they, if they pay their taxes, it becomes a challenge. Not for property maintenance, but if they, if they're not paying their taxes, it's a different story.
Yeah, I wonder how many other places in Monroeville this is happening to, other streets where banks just don't want to do anything with these properties.
If you could get us the address, we can certainly take a closer look at that house.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, did you sign in?
I did.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ed Mindo. I live at 552 Shoemaker Drive. I want to just ask a quick question. It seems like there is a new U-Haul location it's setting up. Bob, you may know something about this on Cottage Lane, but I saw a sign there the other day, and I was very concerned.
The sign's gone.
Okay.
And Mr. Weldon has dealt with the property owner, which is the church, and I doubt very much if that's going to happen.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you sign in, sir?
I did.
Thank you.
I do have the address. Can I just say that?
Yeah, if you could just give it to one of those gentlemen at the end, please. I'll leave the floor open for public comment on any municipal item. Other than Sheets, if it's about Sheets, hold your, hold your thoughts.
My name's Albert Tullamay. I live at 239 Old Haymaker.
I am.
This is sort of, but not really. It's just about how we are getting stuff out to the residents. On Old Haymaker, we are impacted by what's going to happen there. Not everybody received a letter. If you're on a dead-end street, and you come out into that intersection, it's affecting everybody on that street. I didn't get a letter. I'm halfway done with any. So to me, it would be very important that if it impacts you, you deserve a letter. A lot of these people find out because some of us went around knocking on doors.
Yeah, I know that there are letters that are sent from a certain radius of projects for these kind of matters. I know that telephone poles are posted as well, and I know it's on the municipal website as well, as far as things are going. But as far as where your house is compared to where the site.
But on a dead-end street.
About the distance.
Yeah.
It's about like how.
But still, if you, on a dead-end street, it's going to impact you, because you only have one way out, which is right where the, this issue's going to be. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Brankley. I live on Shoemaker Drive. Getting back to the Walmart situation, just have any questions about whether the municipality is going to aid the current tenants in the mall with finding new leasing space, just so we can keep some of these businesses here, rather than lose them all for four years? Is there any plans to work with them?
I mean, we'd be happy to work with them. I'm not sure what capacity, how we could help, other than trying to connect them with other landlords and property owners. The municipality doesn't own any property per se.
Yeah, I know they don't own any, but I'm thinking there should be some kind of committee or somebody to help work with them to try to keep them, so we keep that tax base here and keep shopping for people here. That's, four years is a long time to go without having a lot of these businesses. There's no plans to work with them that you know?
Well, it's a creative idea. I mean, it's something we can discuss with the Chamber of Commerce, and we maybe can set up some kind of committee or task force. But once again, I don't know what our role would be, other than trying to connect them with property owners. But we certainly will follow up with the Chamber of Commerce to see if there's any, any ideas there.
Okay, sounds good.
Sean Logan continually talks to business owners trying to come to Monroeville. So that's one thing.
Yeah, and certainly if any business contacts the municipality, whether it's through the main desk, through a council representative, through myself, we'll certainly try to connect them however we can. And I agree, though, because it will be a long time period before that site is reopened during construction or after the construction. This is still citizens' night. If there's anyone who'd like to address council on any municipal item?
Good evening. My name's John Mulgrave. My parents bought one of the first homes built in Turnpike Gardens. I grew up there, and I consider it a privilege to be able to address you all tonight. Councilman Ratcher, I'm wondering, does your father go by the same name?
My son, my father's deceased, but his name was Robert as well.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Three in a row.
I grew up in Turnpike Gardens, I think, with your dad, and I was wondering why you look so much younger than me. It's because you're, it was your dad. That's wonderful. And then Dr. Lang, we have met on, by email. I apologize, I would have said hello, but didn't recognize you through the email. But I'm here tonight. I want to thank Councilman Stevenson. You suggested I come tonight and talk about the free medical clinic we have here in Monroeville. It's called Sheep Incorporated Free Healthcare Clinic. As you well know, both Dr. Greshock and Dr. Lang, our federal government's shut down right now because the Democrats and Republicans can't figure out why we don't have access for so many people who can't afford healthcare, can't have health insurance. So that's what we do at the, at the free medical clinic. We take any comers that don't have health insurance. We were born in the basement of the Monroeville Assembly of God Church, and for 10 years, we took that every Thursday night, out of the closet, in the basement, set up a medical clinic, and, and made it happen to the best of our abilities. Currently, right now, we have 42 volunteers, doctors, nurses, and physicians assistants, and just general volunteers that do a fantastic job. In the meantime, we raised over a quarter million dollars. We were given some space in the old Penn Hills YMCA, and we did a complete demolition and set up the doctor's office there. We have nine exam rooms, and like I say, we, we take all comers that come every Thursday night and every other Saturday. And I do believe we've changed lives, and, and I think we failed in that we don't, we haven't communicated this very well among our community, and we haven't asked for support. So I did get in contact with, with Dara in the office, the assistant to the manager there, and, and to Dr. Lang, and she suggested that I come as well, and connected me. I think she also appealed to see if we could get any support. This is kind of last minute, here to talk about our major fundraiser, the Sheep Incorporated Gala coming up here on October 18th. And Dr. Lang and your husband, you're coming?
We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, I would love, if we can garner some support, get some of your friends to come. I would like to have you sit at our table, so I can introduce you to my wife, introduce you to, she's a, she's a nurse, and so we would love to have you at our table. But anybody that would like information, would possibly like to attend, we can have John Colbert, are there any '70s Steeler fans here? I bet there is. He's our keynote speaker. He's going to talk. We have a live auction there. We have a lady. It's like she's, it's like she's hustling cattle, man. But it's going to be, you know, we're going to have baskets and things of that nature that you can bid on. And it's a great event, and it's for a great cause. But like I say, I'm hoping to just extend more information, become more prevalent in the community. And as I said, we did move that clinic to the Penn Hills, former Penn Hills YMCA, but we've also opened a second clinic on Tilbrook Road at the Reclamation Church Community Center down there. They have, they take people every Tuesday night. The Monroeville Rotary provided them with a chairlift to make that accessible for anybody that comes in there. So I just really. that accessible for anybody that comes in there. So I just really want to, from tonight moving forward, see if we can garner more support, maybe some financial support. I know we can appeal to the Monroeville Foundation, is that correct? Is that probably the best avenue?
That, yeah, they could consider that.
Okay. But like I said, we, we would love to have any support for the clinic. And any suggestions beyond, you know, what we're doing here, getting the information out that we could get some-
Well, John, where can people find more information? Is there a, is there a website?
We do have a website.
Or is there a Facebook page, something they could look up?
Yeah, yeah, it's the Sheep Incorporated Free Medical Clinic. We have our website. We have, we have, we do have a Facebook page. I'm trying to-
That's okay. And then tell us about the Gala. Where is that happening?
That is at the Stradigos Banquet Center on Saturday night, October eighteenth.
You want to have them put it in the middle, see if Jared could get?
Yeah.
Well, maybe they just run it on ours TV.
Yeah.
And then the website is on there. It's sheepincclinic.org. And like I say, we, we would love to have any of you that would, that would like to come, would like to support it. It'd be a great night. But, but like I say, I look forward to, you know, further in relation-
I think it's a great, great thing that they're doing there. I've heard about it before. I think it's wonderful. I'm delighted spreading the word. What we'll do is we'll put some of these extra ones at the table right by the door, if anyone on their way out wants to grab. And then, we have this information here. We'll disseminate it between everybody up here and through the municipality. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and thanks for spreading the word.
Thanks for listening. Thanks for your opportunity being friend. Yes, sir.
Suggestion is contact the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, I will do that.
Sean Logan.
Did you sign in?
Sean Logan, okay, yeah. And I did sign in, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Much respect.
Thank you. I will leave the floor open for Citizens Night. This is a comment period for any municipal item.
Can I say a PS?
We try to only give one chance at, we want it, one shot at the mic. That's all we got here.
All right.
Hi, my name is Leslie McBride. I live over in Royal Oaks, and I just had a question. I know you guys recently, in the last couple of years, put new streetlights in that are beautiful. And there's one at the beginning of Verlinden that apparently was hit by a vehicle and is out, and one that is completely covered with a beehive. It's really fantastic. You should see it. It's cra- like, literally.
Is that the same light, or two different?
Two different lights across from, yeah, at the very beginning of Verlinden and Old Frankstown. So it's one light on the right that is out, that was hit, and one light on the left. The beehive is amazing. It, it really is.
We already wrote it down. We'll have Duquesne Light take a look at it.
Okay, and I had another question. In between the first house at 104 Verlinden and Keystone Monasory School, there is a line of trees. I called, and I did find out that they own those trees. One of them came down in the storm back in April, and the municipality did get it off the road. But I don't know if Monasory is responsible, or if, I looked online to see like where the property lines were, but it is lying right there, right beyond their fenced-in playground. But according to the, I called up a property, it's still theirs. So if anybody can look into-
We can look into it.
Huge pine tree, like, kind of laying across.
Okay. I mean, typically, or almost always, it's where the tree lands, that's who's responsible. It's not the best, I don't agree with it, but unfortunately, that's how it works. But we can take a look at where it's at with the property lines and talk to the owners.
Okay, I just, I didn't know who to like email on that, so.
You already took care of it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Did you sign in, ma'am?
Thank you.
No.
Oh, standing up.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yep.
Keeping the floor open for Citizens Night for any municipal item, with the exception of Sheets. Very good. We're going to close the comment period for Citizens Night. As I mentioned earlier, at the beginning of next Tuesday's meeting, there will be another comment period at the start of the meeting. However, that one will just be for agenda items, so what we're actually be voting on for that day. At the end of next Tuesday's meeting, there will be another comment period for any municipal item, if you think about anything else. So there's two more chances to address counsel. So we are moving counsel through our agenda. This is going to be our conditional use public hearing, twenty-five dash five dash C, the Sampson Morris Group Sheets. It is a conditional use approval. Dr. Lang, if you would, please.
Yes. The applicant Sampson Morris Group is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Article Five, Section five oh four, GG Fuel Services and/or Charging Stations of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number two seven seven nine, as amended, to permit the operation of a fuel service and/or charging station. The property address is four five zero three Old William Penn Highway and identified as Tax Parcel eight five five R three zero two in the M one planned industrial zoning district.
Thank you. So the, as the applicant is here, very good. So in a moment, what we'll do is we'll have the applicant give their presentation about the matter. And then, if there's anyone from the public that would like to add comment or testimony, we will also do that at the same, same period. So before we get started, I know there were some in the audience that were going to speak about Sheets. I'm going to actually swear everybody in. So if you're going to be speaking about this, this hearing and this item, if you could please stand up so I could swear you in. If you're not sworn in now, you'll get another chance. If we go through this and you hear some things you want to talk about or make comment on, you will have another opportunity, so don't worry. But if you think you're going to speak, now would be your chance to stand up. And if we'd all raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good. Thank you all for accommodating that. And then I'll just start the applicant. If you could just introduce yourself and-
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Jim Rumball with the Sampson Morris Group. As the assistant manager mentioned, we're here for conditional use approval. I'm very pleased to be here, and I noticed a couple of the previous speakers mentioned a couple of the developments that we actually created back in the day. We did Turnpike Gardens all the way back in the nineteen fifties and sixties. The Sampson Group, Warren Sampson, did the Garden City and University Park. We've done Shangri-La. We've been here for over seventy-five years in the community. My first presentation before Monroeville Council was for Royal Oaks in nineteen seventy-two. We did it in nineteen seventy-three, Verlinden Drive. So I've actually been before the Monroeville Council for over fifty, fifty-three years, fifty-four years. It's been a pleasure. Our office is in the Monroeville Business Park. So we've been here trying to bring good communities, developments into the area. We currently own Belmont Ridge, Laval Apartments, Doeville Park, Burnham Woods, some of the properties that we currently own and manage in Monroeville, as well as the Monroeville Business Park we developed back in the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies. And that's where our office is, very close to where our application is for tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge the fact that I can't thank your staff enough for the hard work that they've done trying to get us with all the proper documentation, all the information, and we had to get back and forth. So on behalf of the Sampson Group, I'd like to thank Paul Weldon and Paul Hugis, and certainly Attorney Ratcher for the diligence that they have put together trying to get us to this point tonight. We thank the council for having the hearing. We are, we had two outstanding items, not really outstanding, but two questions that came up in the planning commission, two items that were not quite resolved at the time we made our application. We said on our forms that we would complete those prior to our meeting tonight. I'm pleased to say that the one was additional comments from HRG, the traffic consultants for Monroeville, and also if there was any additional comments from PennDOT. Pleased to announce that we got notification from HRG that they had no outstanding issues, and we, they were, I believe our traffic engineer is going to make an additional comment on that later. PennDOT had a couple of issues on the timing of the lights. We've responded back to them two days ago. We got the information Friday, responded yesterday. So again, we don't think we have any outstanding issues. One further item, which was announced, was, was a question on a voluntary contribution to help improve the signalization at the intersection of Old William Penn Highway and Haymaker. I'm pleased to announce that we have certainly agreed to the voluntary contribution with no reservations on our part. Our attorney, Bill Sidik, I think, notified Mr. Ratcher of that sometime last week. So with those two issues out of the way, we think that we have pretty much completed all of the requirements of Monroeville. We're not asking for any variances. So with that, I'm pleased to announce our, introduce our team that we have with you to answer any questions that we have. Now, standing here right with me right now is Ryan Wodas. He's the Sheets Legal Counsel. But I'll go down the list. With us is Jonathan Grzinski, project manager for Gateway Engineer, who's the project manager for Sheets Project. Mike Haberman is the chief traffic engineer for Gateway Engineering. Brian Rush is the Sheets Engineer Permit Manager here. As I said, Ryan Wodas. Bill Sidik is an attorney representing the Sampson Group. You might know him or recognize him. He's the same gentleman that introduced the get-go on the opposite corner a number of years ago before council. Brendan Moyer is one of our asset managers is with us. And again, I'm Jim Rumball. We're here to answer any questions you might have. Once again, thank you very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Wodas.
Thank you for the introduction, Jim. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor. As noted, my name is Ryan Wodas. It's W O T U S. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Goldberg, Kamen, and Garvin. Does microphone working?
It is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody could hear me. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Goldberg, Kamen, and Garvin here on behalf of Sheets. Pending before counsel for consideration this evening is a conditional use application that has been submitted by Sampson Morris in conjunction with Sheets for a proposed fuel service station, as that term is defined in your zoning ordinance. By just way of brief background before we get into the plans and the actual overall proposal, the site that is subject to this application is situated on the northeast corner of the intersection of Haymaker Road and Old William Penn Highway. The site is comprised of one parcel itself. It's nine point two three seven acres in total size. The property is located in what's designated as the M one zoning district, which is your planned industrial zoning district. And again, the proposed use of the site is for a fuel service station, which is a use that's permitted as a conditional use within the M one zoning district. As part of the overall redevelopment of this site, the applicant's proposing to demolish the existing improvements that are currently situated on the property and redevelop it as a multifaceted Sheets location. That development will consist of the construction of a new convenience store with fuel sales. Of importance, the design, access, and configuration was based upon multiple aspects, including but not limited to providing for efficient flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic to, from, and within the site. Mr. Rumball did go through some of the prior reviews, but I thought important to show that this project, in getting to this point, has been reviewed by the municipality, your consultants, with respect to zoning, stormwater management, traffic, fire truck access, among other things, and separately by the Allegheny County Economic Development Office and PennDOT. Also, as Mr. Rumball noted, at this point, based upon the comment letters that have both already been received, we would consider those, all of those comments to be addressed, and would call those basically clean comment letters at this point, meaning that the plan and project is in compliance with the applicable, applicable ordinance of the municipality. So with that brief introduction, I would like to introduce Jonathan Garcheski, who is with Gateway Engineers. Jonathan, if you don't mind, I'll just spell your name for the record.
Absolutely. G is in George, A, R, C is in Charles, Z is in Zebra, E is in Edward, W S K I.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Garcheski with Gateway Engineers, civil engineering project manager, representing Gateway Engineers for the Sheets Incorporated project. Do you want to go ahead and switch over to the overhead camera, please?
Jonathan.
Oh, perfect. Excellent. Thank you. And so this is just a, a copy of the existing conditions plan of the property, just to orient you with the property being developed and considered here tonight. It's at the, located at the northeast corner of Haymaker Road and Old William Penn Highway. Currently, it sits on the property two church buildings for the Good Oaks Lutheran Church. The main church building centrally located in this location here, and another single-story building located across the frontage of Old William Penn Highway. Existing access to the property is located along Haymaker Road, and a secondary access to the property is located off of Old William Penn Highway, located right here. A couple of things to point out on this plan. On the northeastern portion of the property, the topography slopes off from basically the middle of the property to the north, and it's heavily wooded, and it's, and has streams and wetland areas that are located in this general vicinity located right here. And it's entirely wooded up to the eastern property line located on this side of the plan.
One quick question. Your entrance, is it directly across from the entrance to the subdivision?
The existing access to the current property is not directly across the street from Old Haymaker Road. When Haymaker Road, Old Haymaker Road was reoriented, Old Haymaker came out in this direction, headed in the easterly flow of traffic. There is an existing access here, but every day to day, the current day-to-day traffic comes in and out of this access located right here, just to the west of the Old Haymaker Road access.
About how far?
It's probably about, about a hundred, hundred and twenty feet offset, coming into the existing property as it sits today. With that, I'd like to move over to the proposed site plan. So just access to the property along Haymaker Road, access will remain in the exact same location as it sits today. This will be a write-in and write-out access only, basically coming in and then circulating the site, and being will head north on Haymaker Road in this location, in this general direction over here. Essentially located on the property will be the Sheet Store, surrounded by customer parking, access completely around the store, additional parking located here, trash enclosure here, and then the six multi-pump dispensers under a few island canopy will be located right here. We were just speaking about the access onto Old William Penn Highway. With this proposed layout and orientation, access to this property will now occur directly across from Old Haymaker Road in this location right here, with the vast majority of traffic improvements in this location here, to remove that concrete island that currently sits in there today, better opening up the flow of traffic in both an east and west direction across Old William Penn Highway. The access into the property will be a full access, being, you'll be able to turn in from both directions, as well as exiting into both directions. As part of the proposed plan, we will be installing sidewalks across the frontage of the property where it currently does not sit, as well as extending eastward to the adjacent property to our east. As mentioned previously, the northeastern portion of the property will remain greatly undisturbed and remain heavily wooded to protect properties surrounding the properties over here. And then in addition to that, in regards to the requirements of the municipal ordinances, we are also vegetating, as required, protecting and screening the proposed service station by showing rows of shrubs and trees generally along the northern property line, as well as across the frontage of both Haymaker and Old William Penn Highway, represented by these areas right here.
Is this going to be twenty-four hour operation?
Yes, it will.
Canopy.
Didn't you just say there was a hundred foot, the entrance was a hundred foot below Old Haymaker?
So the existing access into the property on Hay, on William Penn Highway is, it's roughly located right here, the existing access into the church property. However, as part of the revised site plans, that access is going to be-
Specifically, directly across from Old Haymaker?
That is correct, yes.
I thought you said that your entranceway was a hundred feet below.
The existing access is, to the church property currently today, is a hundred feet west of Old Haymaker.
So the entrance is across from the entrance to the subdivision, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's correct, too. Yeah, to align, align that. We also have our traffic engineer can speak to it, but actually creates a much safer situation than what's currently, the current configuration along Old William Penn Highway in that area.
Could we put the camera back up, Jared? And then, Ryan, I'm sorry, it's Jonathan. Jonathan, could you outline, so I see the, obviously the pavement area, and then I see the light green area. Is that actually demarcating the actual property line, or does the property line extend deeper into the woods?
So the property line itself does extend deeper into the woods.
And can, I'm sorry, Jared, if you could just zoom out so we can capture the whole thing there? Jared, if you could just zoom out so we can capture the whole thing there. Thank you.
Yeah.
If you could just outline both.
Yeah, so the northern property line, adjacent to the existing commercial dealership to the, to the north, is located in this general area. It comes off the page slightly, comes over to here, and then the eastern property line for this drawing here is roughly this location just off the page.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, yeah, it actually extends beyond what we're able to show on this, this page.
And then, I'm sorry, the light green portion, what's happening in, what's happening there?
So the light green portion just denotes the limits of area to be constructed upon. It's actually a little bit further out than what we're proposing, the limits of construction or disturbance associated. This is a stormwater management facility located right here. It's roughly going to follow this general orientation as far as what's going to be disturbed. The tree line as it sits today is roughly this line located right here. Some of these trees, it basically comes out like this right now, so we'll take off this little triangle, but the vast majority of the property will remain wooded as it currently sits today.
And then the area adjacent to the detention pond, that's going to be mowed, mown?
Yes.
Okay.
And maybe to orient council a little bit more, could you show sort of the rough location of where existing parking is utilized for, for the church facility?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. So existing parking for the church is roughly in this location right here, and then over the past several years, the property owner has taken on some additional fill material from construction sites. That location is generally located in this area right here, which is currently open and disturbed.
Okay, understood. Counsel, any questions up to this point?
I have a question.
Mr. Williams.
Would you be willing to extend the traffic lane to the, down to the industrial park entrance?
I'm not sure where you're at.
It goes across Old 22, and there's two lanes there, and then it fizzles out. Would you extend that traffic lane to the industrial park?
Are you talking about this lane that comes this way?
Yes.
Up to the industrial park?
Yes.
That's, that's not part of the proposal as it currently stands today. I could have Michael Haberman speak to that, who is our traffic engineer, but that's not part of the proposal here. I think based upon probably the right-of-way width that's there, and then it's actually off of our property line, which probably would require.
Right on the inside of that.
Yeah, would require off-site improvements from a different owner, which we wouldn't be able to facilitate as part of that.
Yeah, that's Cochran's, right?
That's correct, yeah. Once you get up to here, you have the collision center, is what's shown in this area.
Well, I don't know what the right-of-way is there, but I'll certainly look at it when I look at the drawings.
Yeah, so that's, that would really create the pinch point there. That would, so that would create an issue, and it's, that would be an off-site improvement that, that really isn't something that would be a requirement for this development.
Do we have any questions?
Yep.
Yeah, we're, yeah, so your traffic?
I am.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions just on site plan for sites, for our civil engineer, and then we'll go on to the traffic aspect?
This seems like that entranceway, anybody coming out of Old Haymaker, the dead-end portion of it, that wanted to go west would have a hard time, there's, there's actually two lanes, two lanes of traffic, now you can have a left-turning lane into the store.
All right, Michael, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, Michael Haberman with Gateway Engineers. We've prepared the traffic impact study for this site. Want me to just generally talk about what we did?
Well, let's, let's.
You want to answer questions?
Let's answer the question first here, and then we can talk about generally.
Yeah, so I can't, it's not shown on the, I don't know if you can share that. It's not shown on here because this is the proposed condition, but there, everybody's probably familiar with the, there's a big oval-shaped raised concrete island kind of in the place of where this left turn lane is going to be. Yeah, it kind of sits right here. So right now, if you're coming out Old Haymaker to make a left to go westbound, you're essentially still crossing over what, instead of a lane, is now a lane, it's as wide as a lane, but it's a raised concrete island, so you're still crossing over that additional lane. The through lane going westbound is going to be in the same spot as it is today. If I flip back to the proposed condition, essentially that concrete island gets removed to create a left-turn storage bay for turns into the Sheets. In addition, there'll be modifications on the east side to provide a left-turn lane into Old Haymaker, because they'll mirror each other. There will still be one lane east, or westbound, one lane, one lane westbound, one lane eastbound. Are there going to be any stop signs or red lines? No. Or anything there? No, there won't be. So when you, when you take all of the analysis and the traffic here, you analyze it, without the Sheets that's in here, the average delays, you know, during peak times to turn out of Old Haymaker is somewhere between 10 and 15 seconds on average at peak times. When you, and when you, when you add in the Sheets traffic to the models, it essentially, it might increase by about two or three seconds on average, still same level of service, still within the thresholds of what's acceptable. Really, the way the intersection will operate, does operate now and will operate, is a function of the gaps in traffic that are created by the traffic signal. So essentially, when you have different phases of the signal with green lights and red lights, northbound, southbound, that creates those gaps in traffic for traffic to turn in and out. When you take all the volumes that are here, they don't, they don't reach, they're not even close to reaching the thresholds for warranting a traffic signal or warranting any type of traffic, additional traffic control like stop signs.
Who's going to have the right-of-way? When you've got people who want to make a left turn, you've got people coming out of the subdivision, want to make a left turn, who has the right-of-way there?
It's exactly the same as it would be at any other plus intersection, someone coming out making a left turn, someone coming out making a right turn. Whenever there's a gap in traffic, the right turn, if there's a gap westbound, the right turns just happen.
You can't put a stop sign where, where they're stopped to make a turn?
No, always stop control is a whole different set of warrants, and there, none of those are met here. The thresholds for those aren't met.
So, Michael, there's a stop sign that exists here?
Yeah, there's a stop sign coming out of Old Haymaker, you would obviously have a stop if you're coming out of the Sheet site, but there would not be stop signs on Old William Penn.
So to answer that, then, basically, Old William Penn will have the right-of-way as it currently does today. The existing stop sign that's on Old Haymaker will stay in existence, and then Sheets driveway location will as well have a stop sign for vehicles exiting out. So Old Hay, or Old William Penn will still have the right-of-way in that area, and you'll, at the stop sign, you'll have to handle like you would any other intersection where the right-of-way is coming across.
And just like with any other study, the bulk of the analyses was essentially in this influence area, the two entrances, and then the signalized intersection. With a development like this, like a convenience store type of a development, 75 to 80% of the traffic to and from, you know, a Sheets, a GetGo, a Co., and any have you, is actually pass-by traffic, so it's, it's not necess, it's not a destination, it's mostly pass-by traffic. So the reason you see them on corners that have heavy traffic is because they're trying to draw in from traffic that's already at the intersection. So the bulk of the analysis is really to determine when some of that pass-by traffic gets redistributed. So for example, someone's coming westbound on Old William Penn, they decide they're going to come in in the morning, they're going to get gas or get coffee, they're going to come back out on William Penn. It's not new, we're not adding that traffic to the network, it's being diverted and it's coming back out to where it was going already. Same thing with northbound, southbound, so you'll have traffic that essentially gets diverted into the site and then continues on where they were going before. That's about 80% of the traffic to one of these facilities. Different from, you know, something that is a destination where people leave their house specifically to go there and then to go back to their house. So this, that's why the analyses show what they show. So with the timings here in our analyses, we're showing some adjustments to these timings because some of this stuff's going to move around. Some movements will have a couple of second increase in delay, some movements will have a couple of second decrease because you're actually pulling traffic and moving it to another movement. Overall, what the results show is that all of those changes and those little ups and downs and the delays are within the threshold of what's acceptable. It has been reviewed by your traffic consultant, they did provide comments, we've required responses, we've addressed all of their comments, and we've just resubmitted some additional clarification analyses to PennDOT as of yesterday that should address all of their comments.
I just have concerns about the subdivision that's here, that's one way in, one way out, and a lot of the people that live there are elderly, and they're going to be going through things that they're not used to because of what you're doing, and I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying I have concerns, that's all.
Understood. And that was, all of that was part of the analyses of the, of the data that was collected here?
Well, you're using numbers and all of that, and they're using actual, we're driving out onto the road. So I'm just saying, I feel for those people because I think there's going to be more traffic there than there is now.
At some point, that intersection, anybody pulling out of Old Haymaker wanting to go west, making a left, there's going to be a conflict there with the left-turning lane on Old William Penn turning into your store and the eastbound lane on Old William Penn. There's going to be an issue at some point.
I think so too, Mike.
I think, well, I think one item that Mike had talked about basically, he's talking about one thing, is that the difference between this type of facility being vastly, you know, 75 to 80% pass-by traffic, so that traffic is already there. What we're doing though, by creating, one, and Michael, you can talk to the advantages of an actual realignment, so the, the traffic is here. So you reduce that conflict where someone may be making a left out of Old Haymaker, someone's coming out of the church, and they're basically turning simultaneously. By aligning it across here, you actually see your cross-traffic, you see the vehicle as you're doing that, so you're not looking for traffic coming out, and someone happens to be coming out the opposite way out of the church, for instance, in that situation. So the realignment of that actually creates a safer situation than having to offset entrance and driveway, so that's typically, some ordinance is actually required if you have the ability to create alignment like this in lieu of having offset.
A wider site might be better, but it's still going to be creating an issue with the, you know, even with the right turn coming out of Sheets, you know, you've got, add that to the...
Are you talking about up here?
Or just coming, yeah, directly coming out, no, coming out. If someone's coming out of Old Haymaker, you've got two lanes, a left turn into Sheets, the other lane headed east, and then, then you've got a lane coming out of Sheets that's going to be headed, that this car is going to want to come into. At some point, whether it's peak traffic or in the middle of the night, there's going to be an issue there, I'm just saying.
Well, and I, and I understand the commentary, I guess, the, you know, Michael had gone ahead, we've analyzed this, right? And at the end of the day, ultimately, this doesn't impact, you know, level of service in any way that actually reduces things beyond thresholds.
There's, there's no question there's going to be traffic turning in, there's no question there's going to be traffic turning out, there's no question that the intersection's going to have to operate just like any other plus intersection would. But when you plot, when you put all of those numbers into the analyses, the analyses show that this is, that this configuration can function. That doesn't mean that someone's coming out of Old Haymaker and someone's turning right out of the Sheet site, that they don't, they don't have to wait an extra second for them to turn, then go behind them. Really, this whole operation is dictated by the signal operation and the gaps created by the signal. So there will be more traffic, certainly, traffic turning in and out of there.
The traffic, I'm not really concerned about it, it was just that.
Yeah.
The people that live on Old Haymaker.
Understand.
They're left out of their plan.
Yeah, and the vol, really, the volumes on, on the four approaches to this intersection, the volumes on Old William Penn on this section east of Haymaker are the lower of all of the approaches, so the majority of the traffic is through on Haymaker, there's a good amount coming out from the west. There is, I'm not saying there's not traffic here, there's certainly traffic on, on Old William Penn during peak times, but those volumes aren't so high that you're never going to be able to turn out of there. And that's what, that's the reason we do the analyses, to show that. If we would have shown, you know, the delays get so excessive that it can't report anything, then that's what we say, we say, hey, we have a problem here. But when all the numbers and all of the analyses say that the delays are acceptable, levels of service are acceptable, then it should function as a, as a normal plus intersection.
Michael, how many cars can stack, if we're, if they're turning left, if they're traveling eastbound and turning left into the site, how many cars can stack before the intersection is?
At least four, maybe even five, but it, it, it won't ever get to that point because the, the volume coming westbound on Old William Penn Highway, it's not high enough, there's, there's always going to be, it's not a steady platoon of traffic where cars are going to be sitting in that left turn lane, trying to, trying to turn left. If you, the simulations in the model really show that there's really never going to be more than, than one car, maybe two cars in here waiting for a gap. There's so many gaps that, you know, that's all you're waiting for is a gap in eastbound or westbound traffic to be able to turn in. So the queue here doesn't, doesn't necessarily come into play. One of the main things that we did look at, the department wanted us, PennDOT, when I say the department wanted us to look at, and your traffic consultant wanted us to look at, were all of the left-turn lanes at the signalized intersection, because those are all protected, prohibited left-turn movements, meaning you get the green arrow, you can turn, and then that, then it's red, like you can't, no Pittsburgh left, no, you know, yield on green. So when we kind of move traffic around from that pass-by and redistribute some things, that's what we had to analyze to make sure that all of those left-turn lanes were long enough, and, and they are, they're, they're more than long enough. For example, the westbound, which is really where the, the bulk of the increase is going to come from us, because this access is right-in, right-out, so, you know, if you go to the Sheet Station, you want to go southbound, or if you want to go westbound, you have to come out here. So this left-turn lane is actually about 250 feet in length, and even with the redistribution and everything in the analyses, the worst-case scenario queue is like 170 feet. So there's, you know, those are the things that the department wanted to see in our analyses and the year consultant wanted to see, and that we, that we were able to show that, that that works.
Okay. Counsel, at this point, any questions about traffic or the site plan in general? We certainly have a chance to circle back on this as well, but anything right now at this point? Staff, as far as Mr. Wielden, traffic engineer, any comments or concerns from?
I would just reiterate that we reviewed the analysis and the report, and it meets the ordinance and everything that Mr. Haberman said we agree with to this point.
Question for Arsalis, Bob.
Yes.
Is there a conflict, being that they have Gateway Engineering and we have Gateway on staff?
No, we have an agreement that the same people won't be used, and, and it's not, it's not a conflict.
Michael, I still have a couple of questions for you. Can't run away that quick. So based upon, you, you are responsible for conducting the traffic impact study, is that right?
Correct.
And as part of the traffic study, the conclusions that, that were made from completion of that study and review of that study, did that study evidence that there will be no degradation of level of service beyond appropriate limits to the adjacent intersections, including Old William Penn Highway and Haymaker Road in the southern entrance along Old William Penn Highway?
Yes, with a little bit of a caveat, so like I said, some of the movements will have a little slight increase, some will have a slight decrease, but everything is within acceptable levels of service and within what's acceptable to the department and to traffic engineering standards.
And the traffic volumes for this use, would they be similar to the ordinary traffic volumes generated by a service station use?
Yes.
And the proposed modifications to the access points that we just walked through, would you confirm that they meet all site distance requirements?
Yes.
And the, the design as currently proposed before council for consideration is otherwise designed in accordance with sound engineering principles?
Yes.
And as a result of your knowledge regarding the operations of existing and proposed, the proposed Sheets facility, is your conclusion that proposed traffic generated by this facility would not generate any adverse impacts that would be greater than normally generated by this type of use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're good.
Sorry.
Nope.
I know there's, I know you've got a lot of things right still, but I'm, I'm going to walk through and make a little bit more of my record if, if you'll bear with me.
Absolutely, no, certainly.
Thank you. All right, so talking about this is a conditional use, so I wanted to walk through the specific criteria that is applicable pursuant to your zoning ordinance. Section 359-54 sets forth the specific criteria for the fuel service and/or charging station use. Walking through the criteria that's applicable, the first is that a traffic impact and parking analysis study shall be required. As we have walked through, we submitted a traffic impact and parking analysis that was prepared by Gateway Engineers. That ultimately was approved with no further comments from the municipality's engineer, which was HRG. So at this point, there's no further comments that remain open, and all items have been addressed to show compliance with your ordinance. Item two is that a fuel service station shall be located on a lot not less than 18,000 square feet in size. As we had talked about, the parcel is 9.237 acres, which is approximately 402,363 square feet, so well in excess of that 18,000 square foot minimum. Item three is that a canopy over the gas pumps shall be permitted, provided the canopy shall not be enclosed. As we had talked about, we will have a canopy over the fuel service station, but there will not be any enclosure that's proposed as part of our development or as part of these plans. The item, item B is that the canopy shall be located a minimum of 40 feet from the property line on a street right-of-way line. Jonathan, would you confirm, based upon your engineering of this site, that the proposed canopy will be 40.7 feet from Old William Penn Highway, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And it will be 61 and a half feet from Haymaker Road?
Yes.
And that would be in compliance with the 40-foot setback?
That is correct, yes.
Item C is that the canopy shall be removed immediately if the principal use is changed or discontinued. On behalf of the applicant, we acknowledge that, and in the event the principal change, principal use changes or is discontinued, we'd be required to remove that canopy.
Are there going to be any detrimental lighting to any other properties?
No, so we did do, as part of the overall land development plan that went in, there was a photometric plan that was submitted and showed that we do meet all the requirements in terms of onsite lighting and illumination and then reductions along all the property lines. So, all lighting is in compliance with your ordinance as well.
Okay.
Item four relates to if you have an automatic or self-serve vehicle washing operation, none is being proposed as part of this development, we will not have onsite car wash. Item five is no open-air outdoor storage of materials, merchandise, and equipment shall be permitted. Again, none is being proposed as part of this application.
Are you going to be selling any butane or propane there?
They're, go ahead, Jonathan, if you want to answer.
Yes, propane will be for sale here, it'll be located in this general location on this side of the store here.
So that'll be in a traditional enclosure that you may have seen in other Sheets facilities.
You won't fill them there, they'll already be filled on-site.
That's correct.
You don't have a filling station for it?
That's correct, you'd bring your empty one, exchange it there, and take a previously-filled one. The item six relates to outdoor speakers should be permitted for emergency announcements only. We agreed to that, that is also part of the operation there, there won't be noise, music playing from the facility, just as part of general operations. Item seven is, requires a minimum fifteen-foot buffer shall be maintained between the use in all adjoining properties. Jonathan, would you confirm that we have provided that fifteen-foot boundary, or fifteen-foot buffer yard around the perimeter of the property?
Yes, we have.
In addition, screening shall be provided along lot lines to block view of the service operations and stored material and equipment. As Jonathan had walked through, we will be providing landscaping that's in compliance with the buffer requirement. As Jonathan also noted, in areas here, there will be the ability to retain existing mature vegetation, so that's the north of the site and to the east of the site. So, a good portion of what's currently vegetated in those areas will remain, and we will be adding additional landscaping to comply with your ordinance. Item eight is that all mechanical equipment shall be screened from the view of adjoining properties. As proposed as part of this design, mechanical equipment will be located on the roof, so all HVAC systems, everything else, and there will be screening that's proposed as part of the plan that's for the future development of the site. And we'll have rooftop screening. Item nine is that all waste collection storage areas shall be located at least fifty feet from the nearest building and shall be enclosed by a solid masonry screen wall. Pursuant to our plans, the refuse will be stored in the solid masonry trash enclosure. And Jonathan, based upon, again, your engineering of the site, the current, the location of that trash enclosure, which is here, will be approximately fifty-five feet from the store, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And we also look further to the next nearest structure, and we'd also confirm that is approximately one-hundred-and-seventy feet from the nearest building to the trash enclosure that's not on our site.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so that's in compliance with the fifty-feet requirement. Item ten is that refuse and trash shall be stored outdoors only if placed in closed containers located in an area screened from view at all points, or when viewed from ground level. There will be, what you'd expect to see, traditional refuse containers in there, they will be closed, so trash will be taken out periodically, they'll open them, put the trash in the refuse container, and then that ultimately will be closed. As we just talked about, we will have the masonry trash enclosure, so all the containers that are utilized as part of the operations of the fueling station will be enclosed and will be screened from view. Item eleven is that all fuel, oil, and other flammable substance, substances associated ventilation equipment and charging stations shall be stored or located at least fifty feet from any lot line. Again, Jonathan, from your engineering of the site, can you confirm for the record that the underground storage tanks will be located greater than fifty feet from all lot lines?
Yes, they will.
Item twelve is that there shall be no parking of motor vehicles, trucks, tractors, or trailers in excess of forty-eight hours. Again, that's agreed and acknowledged. In addition, I wanted to note that this site doesn't even provide for tractor-trailer parking, so we will not even have tractor-trailers coming to the site, parking here, no ability for them to even access the site, so we know that they won't be there in excess of forty-eight hours. In addition to the specific criteria, section 359-53 of your ordinance also talks about the general standards associated with conditional use applications. Under item A, want to note for the record that this proposed use is consistent with the existing neighborhood. As noted at the beginning, this is located in the planned industrial zoning district. The site is located on the corner of what's designated by Monroeville as two arterial roadways. As Mr. Rumbaut always also talked about, and we've referenced generally as well, to the north of the site is Cochran Collision Center, and as you move further north, there are warehousing, industrial, and other office uses located directly to the west across Haymaker is the existing GetGo facility, which will operate very similar to what's being proposed here. As noted in review of the specific criteria, as well, the proposed use conforms with the specific conditional use provisions and the general regulations of the zoning code. Also think it's important to note for counsel that no relief is being sought as part of this. We didn't go to seek any variances or other waivers or modifications from your subdivision and land development ordinance or stormwater. So, the plan as it currently is proposed complies on all fronts with your existing In addition, based upon the proposed operation of this site, it will not create any detrimental effects, and this use already exists, again, directly to the west of the site. And to further show compliance, nothing is proposed, again, that varies from the municipality's legislative determination that this use should be permitted in this zoning district and this property located within the industrial zoning. In addition, the proposed use complies, again, with all zoning regulations, as I noted, the subdivision land development ordinance, stormwater management ordinance, and again, no relief is being requested, and municipality's review letter, as we talked about at the beginning, confirms compliance with those regulations. Under subsection E, the proposed use does comply with all performance standards and will not create a condition that is dangerous, injurious, or noxious, based upon this use being permitted and the proposed operation of the site. In addition, as previously noted as well under subsection F, this use is compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses based upon the underlying zoning that it's located within. In addition, under section G, to confirm that the site was suitable in terms of topography, soil conditions, and size, proposed redevelopment has been evaluated and designed by multiple professionals, which includes, but was not limited to, civil engineers, traffic engineers, and soils engineers, to confirm that the site and conditions are suitable for this proposed use. Section H, pursuant to the traffic impact and parking analysis, along with the internal access drives, permit appropriate delivery vehicle access and fire truck access, which was also taken into consideration in review by the fire chief. The plans evidence the site has appropriate pedestrian access and vehicular access and will not result in undue traffic congestions or conditions on adjacent streets, and will provide for safe and efficient internal circulation and sufficient off-street parking and loading. That was further confirmed by Mr. Haberman's testimony and the report that had been submitted and accepted by your traffic consultant. Item I, the plan complies with all the standards and requirements regarding stormwater management and waste storage and disposal under your ordinance. And under item J, the applicant proposed to install, again, significant landscaping to meet the standards of the municipality's ordinance, and will retain that existing mature vegetation where feasible, to provide sufficient buffering of this use from all adjacent properties. So, that was a mouthful, I'm done at this point with that, but I appreciate the time and opportunity to walk through those items.
Doing your job.
And one item, just from a housekeeping perspective, is just to confirm that the application, which, as submitted, it was an application for conditional use and site plan approval and all plans would be included as part of the record for this application.
And you've been to the planning commission, and what was their determination?
That was the unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions at this point? I'm going to open up the public comment period.
Just one quick question. Is this unique to single-family homes, the facility, you know, the vicinity of the Sheet store to a, like, I'm saying a hundred yards, three-hundred feet?
So the answer to that is no, this actually is, the distance that the residential homes are is greater than a good portion of facilities that I've been involved with indirectly for Sheets. We've had ones where they actually abut directly here, there would be a home.
We would have it.
You know, twenty feet.
I haven't seen any, most of them.
So there was one, I could give you an example, there was Elwood City, we did one that was basically residential all around, it actually was a demolition of four single-family homes, and there were homes that remained directly adjacent to it, and they probably were on thirty-foot lots, so the homes were pretty close to one another. And in a situation like that, yeah, you would have a home right here. And there's other locations as well, that, so this is not an uncommon, uncommon type of development, I would say.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Ratcher, anything from you at this point?
Nothing at this time.
Very good. So I'm going to open the floor for the public comment or public testimony. So, anyone that had been sworn in earlier, anyone that's in the audience would like to add any testimony or questions or comments about this matter, now would be your chance to do so. So once you get up here, let's have, here, anyone, have them sign in again?
Just if they state their name is sufficient.
Okay, so state your name for the record and then.
My name's Albor Tolomeo, I live at two-thirty-nine Old Haymaker. I've been coming out into that intersection for over forty years, and whoever did the traffic study, they failed. I'll let you know that right now. As Mr. Adams said, putting that intersection directly across, we are not only looking east toward Wurzberg for the traffic coming up over the hill, we're looking to the west toward the school, and now we have to look across the street who's making, they're, they have the right-of-way because they're making a right out of the Sheets, so we're not only watching both directions, but we're watching across the street too. My biggest concern is we're talking about stacking of three or four cars. The stacking that was always the problem was the stacking that went out into the intersection of forty-eight. When you have a school bus that stops from a school, you're adding everything that's going to be coming from Logan's Ferry Road that they're building there, that's the shortcut. So the gentleman that was here that was talking about Logan's Ferry, well, a lot more is going to be coming that way. And that stacking that goes out onto forty-eight, when you have one or two school buses stop, and when you come off the Parkway and you come up to that intersection, right on red, and they don't stop, they just continuously feed that, feed Old William Penn Highway. So, you're adding another intersection, pretty much, that we have to watch out for. And with the school and all the traffic, because it's one of the busiest corridors, I believe I heard in the state, so it's not going to get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Very patient.
That was really impressive, I guess we're in the big leagues right now, I have no idea what I'm doing here. Although I didn't hear anything about.
Can you state your name, please?
Justin D'Ambrosio.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay. About how this would impact the folks who are already living there in that area. Obviously, their property values will probably diminish. The additional congestion will make their lives a little more difficult to deal with, I suppose, and how the, their additional traffic mingle with the traffic that's already there. There are only two, two-lane highways, they can't expand Old William Penn to anything more than it is, it's a two-lane highway, two-lane, and that's it. And it's already saturated. You put more cars there, you're going to do that, that's definitely going to happen. That place is going to be a huge mess. And what about GetGo? What are they going to do, put GetGo out of business, which they probably can do, and probably will eventually do, because they'll be competing with one another, and I suspect GetGo will lose that fight, because Sheets is a pretty, pretty, pretty substantial corporation. To continue with what I started to say when I first came up, why would they, anybody put a full-service gas station next to one that's already there? There's a considerable congestion at the light at Old William Penn Highway, I guess you've heard that enough. I don't personally believe these two roads can absorb anything more than they already did. I mean, you go there at certain times of the day, and you just can't move. I mean, it's like, so crowded with cars and buses and traffic, it's just unbelievable. There's also a school full of young children just across the street to consider, it's not the ideal place for a school in the middle of all of that business going on. And also, there's another Sheets just a stone's throw away from where they want to build. One going east from that spot, one going west from that spot. Aren't two Sheets's enough for one town? At this rate, we may as well change our name from Monroeville to Sheetsville, because that's where we're heading. I mean, it's, I'm sure it's a great company, they have good people, and it's valuable, but this is not the place for, a place like Sheets to be putting their product, they should be moving it in a more suitable environment. This, the point I'm trying to make here is, Monroeville's full of businesses, another Sheet here in this area, right here in this spot, will just about finish this place as a residential neighborhood. And cannot we not be allowed to have one small island so that our families can live reasonably quiet and comfortable? The traffic on Old William Penn has more than doubled since I've moved here. And I ask you, would you look forward to having the traffic tripled or quadrupled just outside your front door? Would you want this place next to you? Sadly, if there's one thing I've learned over the years, is that dealing with issues as an average person with very little wealth and no power has no chance to succeed. How do we compete with Sheets? We can't compete with Sheets. There's no way. I mean, these guys are right at the top of their game. I wasn't going to say this, but I thought I would, why stop with building just another Sheets? I say, hey, let's also build a Walmart. How about a show of hands? How many in this group, this room would also welcome Walmart as a neighbor? Zero. I rest my case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You know, I'm looking at this poster, can I show this? My house is on here. You know, seven years ago, my husband and I.
So, state your name for the record, please.
Oh, Ruth Voico.
Hi, Ruth.
Two-six-six Old Haymaker.
Thank you.
This is me.
If you could, so what you do, place it, place it flat down, and then, thank you, Ryan.
That's my roof.
Wait a second.
That's my car.
Okay.
Oh, that is my roof and my SUV. I am directly across from the church that they're going to tear down, and when my husband and I drove past this ranch house on that nice level lot, it wasn't the nicest thing that there was a GetGo on one corner, and there was a school, and there was the church. How am I supposed to live across the street from a Sheets? I don't think we can do that. And you know what, there are school buses that stop at the corner of my property every day, and Port Authority buses. We have to put up with the fire engines and the ambulances and all this. I think it's going to be a mess, the traffic, two lanes, we have two Sheets up in Monroeville, you know, on the highway, that are jammed every day. My husband and I thought we'd live out our days here. I would like to think that's possible. I, I'm just sick to my stomach. Thank you.
Do I need to sign my name?
Please.
Yes, please. Sign mine too. You're going to get a two for one under five minutes.
Well, we're not timing this part.
Oh, okay.
I shouldn't have said that, but.
Sorry.
Let the cat out of the bag. I will say, everyone has abided by the five-minute time limit, right, for the comment period. But also, too, this is a public hearing, so we will leave the floor open.
Valerie, warning, I am a Monroeville resident.
Leslie McBride, Monroeville resident.
I've got a couple of questions. We're both on the school board. With Gateway Middle, did you do your traffic study with school starting and school ending with the number of buses? We have twenty-four buses coming out of the campus and eight vans, plus we have parent drop-off and pickup.
That's approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty cars daily in the beginning and the end of the school day. So, we were wondering what time that study was completed.
Yeah, I was going to say, so how do you like us, do you want us to wait till the end?
Yeah, one, how about this? That's a good question, but do you want to, do you have multiple questions that maybe as far as traffic or?
Go ahead. Yes. And, well, and I actually had another question was, is there plans to close any of the Sheets in Monroeville and make this one of the primary Sheets? As there are some in, in both, and that would also impact the traffic more than the current And GetGo already impacted the middle school now that we have four grades versus the, the two. And, you know, I, we've all been there in the day, and I don't live near where the Sheets is being built, and I love Sheets coffee. But my, my concern is the busing, the red lights, what that looks like, as it definitely, definitely takes more than two to ten seconds for our buses to pull out of there. And if you're talking red light distance for cars as one bus, so what, what does that look like?
You made a very good point, because Sheets on two-eight-six had a store, closed it, and built another one. So, that would be a decent question, I think.
My concern, too, is we have a lot of activities at Gateway Middle through the municipality and everything. There's a lot of cars coming in and out. When the cars come out, making a left across from GetGo, it's very hard to see the cars coming up. And there's a lot of problems with the cars coming up because the cars can't get out of the middle school. And I know we had asked for a red light in that section, but Pendott had turned us down when we had, you know, when we were enlarging the school. So, those are kinds of questions with us, because someone had spoken about buses stopping there at that first on Old, on Old Haymaker. So, with the cars coming out, what kind of congestion is that going to bring to our students? Because those buses, once they drop the students off at their homes, go to circle around and hit the elementary schools. So, how much later were our elementary students getting home?
So, okay. So, Ryan, I'm not sure if this is for Ryan or if it's for Michael, as far as how you want to answer this, but if we get some clarification on the traffic regarding buses and the daytime.
Yeah, we'll bring the expert out.
Yeah, the school time.
I can just answer that. So, we always, when there's a school anywhere in the vicinity of where we're doing a study, we always collect data when school is in session and when weather's good. So, our data collection was done while it was a fully functioning school on a day that it was in session and there was no weather issue.
Would you say that the study was done, say, between seven-thirty and ten to eight, when the schools were being, the buses were dropping the kids off and when they were being let out?
It is done from seven to nine AM is where we collect the data, and that we analyze the highest one hour within that seven to nine time period. And then the evening, it's the four to six time period, because that volume of traffic during that time, commuter traffic, is significantly higher than, you know, earlier in the afternoon. So, we would have captured the, the morning, but in the afternoon, the, the school traffic would not have dictated what the impact would or wouldn't be in the PM. It's that four to six timeframe.
Well, I'm saying with the let-out from Gateway Middle School, they let out from three o'clock, and that's with the parent pickup and everything.
Understood. But what I'm saying is that that time wouldn't dictate, the four to six volumes overall at the intersection in that study area are much higher than the fifteen minutes to thirty minutes that the school's letting out. So, the, the higher volume is the PM four to six that we evaluated. The morning, seven to nine, we would have captured all of it together, commuting traffic and school traffic, because they overlap.
Okay.
So. Well, I think the, the answer to that, though, is basically, so the four to six is going to have a higher traffic volume, as Mike had talked about, the PM peak hour. So, if we can show that there's no degradation in terms of timing and access during that four to six, then, then the conclusion would be is that even during the PM dismissal time, there would, similarly, there wouldn't be any degradation, meaning it wouldn't take longer for your buses to get in, get out, and therefore impact students getting home or having to go to another school to, to drop off or pick up their students.
So, is the concern, as far as, so dismissal time, is the concern buses getting to the school or the buses that are leaving the school?
Actually, both, because of the red light. You know, we already don't have, you don't have a long length, like, so when you come out and you have to make a left to go down on, on Haymaker, right? Yeah. You know, you keep catching that left turn red light. So, coming in on, on that road, you know, in and out is fine, but it's coming on Old William Penn Highway.
So, buses, buses exiting the school, making a right?
And making, making a right or a left, the red, the red light impact, or when the light turns green and they try to make a left out of Old William Penn Highway, the amount of traffic that might be coming, in addition to coming out of Sheets during, during that time, like, because the reality, we've all been through that intersection, and again, I love Sheets, but the reality versus what's on paper here, from what we've seen with, you know, almost two hundred vehicles at this time is the concern. In addition to what else. You just wanted to.
Those are good comments and good concerns.
And if I could just briefly address that last one, I think the, the concern coming up out of Old William Penn Highway, accessing out of the school, that's on the same side as, as the GetGo traffic would be, coming out, right, to make a left out. So, then we're getting to a signalized intersection so that the impacts would only be on the other side, meaning that left turn lane, we wouldn't be creating additional stacking from the school coming out and then making a right or left on Haymaker Road, because our traffic would be on the other side.
But they would be crossing over going down Old William Penn Highway.
Right, but that, but it wouldn't, but you're, the concern is hidden at red light at, at the left. That left is going to be access.
Do you still have that first stop on Old Haymaker where they let the kids out? How much?
Yeah, Val, come on up. You want to finish your commentary.
Just come out, back up on the table.
What I'm, yeah, you can. Saying is, the first stop is Old Haymaker when they come out. You have, the school's down here. When they come out, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're just, oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, over here. So, the first stop, when it, once they come out, you know, from down the, they have two exits.
They're coming up this way.
Okay. So, they get through here, the first stop is going to be Old William Penn across from Sheets. So, that traffic will be backed up, not knowing what's coming out from here.
Well, that's, now, you're going to have a large stack here, and if that's one vehicle stopping here, one bus, that's, that's not going to be a problem in terms of the distance from here to here.
We have more than one bus that goes that way because they.
Right. But if we have one stop here, Mike, you can confirm, there'd be sufficient stacking from Haymaker Road to Old Haymaker Road if there were a bus stop, is that right?
I'm just saying, you guys did this study, these are just our concerns, you know.
That's what we're answering, yeah.
The time constraints, like we're saying, getting these buses with, getting the kids delivered home, and then getting them back on the routes to the elementarys, that's what. Especially like in the morning, you know, if you're coming out of here and crossing over, the parents and buses turn left out of there. So, if this light turns green, yeah, the amount.
But that's on the other side of the signal.
It, it is.
Street.
Correct. But it would be a direct result of additional traffic. And did we, are we closing any of the, or is this going to be the main, one of the bigger Sheets that?
You beat me to answer that question. The answer is no, we will not be closing any of the locations.
So, I'll leave the floor open. All right? How are you doing?
I'm trying to get through this, if we could just get through this application.
Could you state your name for the record?
Robert Gordon.
Thank you.
I live right past the church. Traffic study, come down to my house, park in my driveway between seven and eight, and try and make a left turn or a right turn out of my driveway. It's almost impossible. I have to speed out and then put my brakes on so I don't hit somebody up ahead of me. Okay? Traffic is a nightmare on that road. Foot traffic is bad. Speeding is out of this world. You also have, when there's an accident out on twenty-two heading east, that's a shortcut. Because they come down Old William Penn Highway, then go over, turn left. I have seen traffic backed all the way up to the hill, to the crest of the hill, at that red light. And Sheets could be there, but no exit out of, on Old William Penn Highway. Okay? This reminds me of the mattress paces you, you guys approved all the time. They're gone. Now, we're getting gas stations all over the place. I won't buy a Sheets. I don't buy a GetGo. I have the one down in the hill, down at the bottom of the hill. I've been getting gas here ever since they've been there. So, they're not going to get my business, they're going to take it from GetGo. Okay? So, now you've got two splitting the profits. Go somewhere else. Please, send this back to the planning commission so the questions can be answered at that level and we can understand it. To get a letter to say this was going on, nobody came and talked to me. I tried to get a, look at the, the plans and couldn't even get a return phone call till three days prior. That's unacceptable. So, why don't you learn to work for the citizens? We don't work for you, you work for us.
Good evening, my name is Patty Kamola. I signed in already.
Thank you.
I live on Old Haymaker Road. And from where, from my front porch, I can see where the Lutheran Church is from my, from my property. I'm just four houses in, so I could see it from my house. So, excuse me. I tried to write some of this stuff down so I wouldn't babble on, I hope I don't. As a concerned citizen, I, along with many of my neighbors in our community, strongly oppose the proposed sale of the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church to the Sampson Morrison Group for the purpose of replacing it with a Sheets gas station. When I questioned some of my neighbors at the very beginning at Old William, at, at Old Haymaker Road, Old William Penn, and Williamsburg about tonight's public hearing, the majority of the residents did not even receive the letter that I received informing them of the meeting tonight, and many were not even aware of the possible sale. When sharing this information with them, we all discussed and had the same following concerns. And I'm certainly going to hit the traffic last. The incompatibility with community needs. Repurposing the church for civic, educational, or nonprofit use could be better serviced our community needs without the downsizing of a gas station. Our community deserves developments that promote health, sustainability, and unity, not projects that prioritize profit over people. To put a Sheets right next to an already established GetGo is only there for complete compete, competition of sales, period. There's also the concern of increased criminal activity. Having another business that's open twenty-four-seven, less than a half a mile from both the turnpike and the Parkway, gives easy access in and out of our community and school zone for criminal activity. Light pollution and noise pollution. This has already drastically increased from the GetGo station that has been placed there along with the addition of the Gateway Middle School coming out. The lights along the middle school stay on all night long. This just increases the already bright lights polluting our residential area. The church served our community as a quiet, peaceful space. Adding a Sheets or any other gas station will bring an entirely different disruptive energy to our community. Sheets with its focus on food and fuel, bringing in heavy vehicle traffic, idling engines, and possible litter will be contributing to an environmental downgrade and impacting our community quality of life. When we first moved into this neighborhood, it was so nice to see that we can actually live in the heart of Monroeville, and being on a dead-end street, it feels very residential. A significant increase in traffic causing safety concerns. This clearly is a big concern for the people in our community. From the location of the current church property, there's already an operational Sheets gas station one-point-seven miles east of the property and one one-point-four miles west of the property. Both are located on Business Route twenty-two, which is much better suited for the heavier traffic volume. The church caused minimal traffic during limited hours on Sundays. Building another gas station at the intersection of Old William Penn Highway and Haymaker Road will dramatically increase the potential for accidents, traffic congestion, and noise to our residential area and school zone. Looking at this proposal here, I don't even see, at the moment, I know that there is a bus station that's, or a bus stop that's right in this area. I don't know if the bus stop is still supposed to be there, because currently, the bus stop is right in this area here. So, I don't know where the bus stop is going to be now, but I certainly don't see it on this draft. And as far as traffic, once again, you don't live in this area, I'm sorry, but the traffic that we see, I see from behind my house, the school was built this direction. Out my kitchen window, whenever all the leaves come down, which is coming down very soon, I can see the school. I can see the road. I look out my kitchen window and I can see the traffic backing up. It doesn't take much of an accident for traffic to get backed up and clogged up on a daily basis, usually around five o'clock. Excuse me. And, excuse me. And as I continue to see the traffic get worse, whenever you add another fuel station, you can't tell me that that's not going to cause more traffic, because more people are going to be coming into the community. There's such an issue, like the one gentleman said, of people speeding up Old William Penn Highway. So, as they speed up the hill, as we're trying to come out of our street, people speed up this road so many times. I've heard stories of us trying to turn left, and people are flying up the road and really have to veer out of the way of people driving as fast as they do. Yes, there are speed limits, but that doesn't mean people do them on our streets, and that's clear on any road. But it's certainly even worse here. I'm concerned that my eighteen-year-old son, who's going to be getting his drivers, taking his driver's test next week, I'm concerned for his safety as he's becoming a new driver whenever it comes to something like this, because the roads are bad enough. People are crazy enough. And to have the people who speed, the traffic concerns, that's just going to get worse because of this, is our biggest concern in our community. I respectfully urge all involved with the decision-making and local elected officials in planning board to reconsider in the best interest of the residential community that would deeply, that would be deeply affected by this sale. I ask you, please, to stop this from happening.
Hi. Bruce Randall, Old Haymaker Road, and I did sign in. One thing, I'm pretty sure the study missed on the, the traffic, was this occurs during the evening rush hour. This is, this is Haymaker Road here. Okay, the Parkway gets off here. But a lot of people want to turn left on Old William Penn Highway to get home from work, and the red light over here, that left lane, is backed up almost all the way to the ramp that gets off the Parkway. So, instead of waiting in line, many, many cars, I see this every day when I'm out, they turn right instead. And right, right over here where this concrete island is, where the. And right, right over here where this concrete island is, where the, at the entrance to Old Haymaker Road, they do a U-turn and get back in line over here so that they can go back down to Old William Penn without having to wait for the light. And they speed in order to do this. And I guarantee you, there's going to be accidents, especially with the new traffic for the, for the Sheets coming, coming in and out as well as people coming out of Old Haymaker. That's all. Thank you. And I agree with what all my neighbors said on the other points as well.
Hi. I'm Judy Randall. I'm 248 Old Haymaker Road. I did want to point that out. I didn't know my husband stole that idea from me. But not only was I concerned about, I, we take our grandchildren, I pick them up off of the turnpike. So I'm on the turnpike every morning and every evening, three days a week. So, and I used to work in Oakland, so I came home to this intersection for quite a while. And my husband's absolutely right. Before, it wasn't a right turn only here. Now it's a right turn only, but people just take advantage of that because they do not want to wait and turn left. So what I fear will happen is anyone going, oh, let me stop at Sheets, which we know, common sense would tell you to build a Sheets here. You know it's going to do well, which it means we're going to get a lot of traffic. So every, every vehicle, I won't say every, but most vehicles aren't going to wait to go straight. They're going to turn right and go in this way because I would do it. We all do it. What's fastest? That's what we do. So that is a big concern, that there is even an entrance or exit right here because of that. Another concern, I wondered if anyone considered, and then it'll get out of your hair, is that 22 is right down the road. So anyone coming to 22, which anyone, anymore, when I go to get on the turnpike in the morning, I don't even come up to this intersection. I make a right, I go down to the traffic light, and I turn right and come up the hill. Because school, at school time, forget it. That traffic is way backed up. So you add the people that are coming down 22 during morning, and who doesn't want to go to Sheets coffee or breakfast sandwich in the morning? Whatever. Hey, well, what is a big deal, cutting off that corner, going up to get on the parkway or going this way to go get your Sheets coffee and then making a left and getting on that parkway? Easy peasy. So I don't know if anyone's considered the amount of people on 22 that are going to be coming up this way. I really didn't consider it until I sat here and listened to everything. And I luckily had time to think about these people. This, this right turn only is going to be really impacted by anyone who wanting to, wants to go to Sheets. Because we already have the people who want to go straight, you know, turn left. That's going to be a zoo. And anyone coming up 22 is going to be, we're going to be impacted by that. I, I passed the Sheets on my way here, coming up to 22, it was packed. It's a great business for you guys. I have nothing against Sheets whatsoever. But to think that, oh, we're only going to get the traffic we normally get here, it won't be impacted at all, is a joke. A complete joke. If that was true, you wouldn't even build this.
I'll leave the floor open.
My name is Carol Cruzy, and I live at 4550 Old William Penn Highway. And I wanted to give all of my neighbors off of Old Haymaker a chance to speak first because they're the ones that are the biggest impact here.
Carol, did you sign in?
Yes, I did. I bought my house 20, 25 years ago. 25 years ago, Old William Penn had practically no traffic on it. Today, I can't get out of my driveway sometimes. I actually have to pull into my driveway, go up, do a three-point turn before I back into my garage because I know I can't back out onto Old William Penn anymore. I'm going to get hit. The traffic on Old William Penn is insane. As 22 has built up, nobody wants to deal with 22 anymore. And all the traffic and all the lights, Old William Penn is the cutoff. I sat on, in my living room the other night, and I watched car after car after car coming up Old William Penn past my home, doing 50, 60 miles an hour. That's typical for that road. And with all due respect for the gentleman from Sheets, I work for a real estate developer. Traffic studies are wonderful. They're numbers. Talk to the people who live there because the traffic is insane. And it's only going to get worse with a Sheet sitting there. And Councilman Adams, I appreciate your comments about that turn lane. It's going to be a problem. It's going to back up more than four cars. It's going to back up into that intersection. What I worry about for myself is what's my house going to be worth? Who's going to want to buy my house when that intersection is right there? Would you buy my house with all of that, at that intersection? And who I really feel sorry for is this young lady right here in that parcel who is going to sit there and look at that Sheets. Nobody's going to buy her house. I wouldn't buy her house. So I really would ask that you reconsider. I mean, how many Sheets, how many gas stations does Monroeville need? It's not just about Sheets. How many gas stations do we need? I mean, there's, I can't imagine there's enough people that are going to support all these gas stations. And all of the comments from my neighbors is correct. The Sheets on 286, it's crazy. The Sheets right down here, packed. It's not just people coming up and see, that are, that's their regular traffic. It's not. I thank you for your time.
I own a house on Old Haymaker Road.
Greg, did you sign in?
Oh, I signed in, yes. I did. Thank you. I think my concern would be the congestion. And one of the things that I've experienced in the last four years since we moved back from Lancaster was the speed of the cars coming up. I can, I get to that where I have, I'm going to make a left, and I look up here and there's no car. I look down here, there's no car. By the time I look around, there's somebody coming so fast around that corner. I've also seen them come up real fast the other direction. I, I don't know what the answer is for that, but, I mean, you have to wait. You have to wait. But it's like, it can change so fast because the visibility isn't actually all that good when, when they come around off the parkway. And the visibility isn't that good this way because they're coming up a hill and then all of a sudden they're there. I've had people, I looked, good, 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 and then wham, they're just right on you. And I don't know how to explain that. But the concern is really the increased congestion. I don't know what will happen. I am concerned about it. I know some have expressed concerns about property values and, and whether that would affect who would be coming into the neighborhood. I don't know about that, but the congestion I am concerned about. And I think that's all I want to say.
I will leave the comment period open for the public hearing. Councils, are there any other questions for what we've learned for the, from the developer, from the applicant, from the residents? Any questions or comments? Mr. Ratch, is there anything else that we need to wrap up?
Unless the, the applicant wants to give some rebuttal.
Yep. Anything from our standpoint?
Yeah, no, no, I, we're good.
Staff, is there anything that needs to be added?
No.
And then gentlemen, if there's anything else you want to wrap up with or...
Question as far as the bus stop?
Well, hang on. So actually, thank you for bringing that. No, you're, you're fine. I'm going to, I do want to follow up on that question. So there, there was a question about a Port Authority or PRT now, the PRT bus stop? Is that, I don't know if there was an unofficial one or an official one?
We can go back to...
Bus stop, right by Haymaker.
Yeah, we'll get the overhead camera on in a second, Jared.
So since we only control the northern side, right here, if you can see the gray outline, there's actually going, that's going to be the Port Authority bus stop. And what's actually being created to create a little bit better situation is this striped area that doesn't currently exist. So the bus will actually have an area to basically be able to pull into that area and still have a travel lane behind it, so it won't be impacting the traffic flow to the intersection here.
And then, I understand what you're saying about the other side of the property, but from the residents, there's a bus stop on the opposite side as well?
My property by Haymaker.
And that's something we could maybe follow up with, with PRT and get some insight on that part on the other side.
Since it's off-site, yeah, we, we won't be able to touch it, even if, no, there were proposed improvements.
Understood.
She says it's official. There's a sign for that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to PRT and see what the plan is there, if there is a plan at that site. Is there anything else you would like to add for the hearing or any kind of...
No. Just want to say thank you for your time this evening. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to close the conditional use public hearing. Once again, as I mentioned at the, the start of the meeting, this is not a voting meeting. So this is all, all this is going to be considered a week from today, next Tuesday's regular council meeting. But we are going to close the conditional use public hearing. We are still in our work session for our agenda-setting meeting for next Tuesday, but we need to take a little recess for our stenographer. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be back with the rest of our meeting. Okay. This meeting is back in session. We are going to be moving through our agenda. We have a quick announcement. Val Warning from the Gateway School District.
Yes. I'd like to mention, the second Wednesday of every month, which will be tomorrow, we hold a good distribution at Gateway High School. It's open to anyone. You don't need any kind of registration, income, information, nothing. So with the uncertainty of what's going on with our government, feel free to come and get anything that you may need. The gates open at 6:00, and we will keep them open as long as there's someone in mind. So, appreciate it.
We can get that information in our communication channels as well.
Where's the facility at?
Pardon me?
Gateway High School?
It's a high school. It's above the football field.
Above the football field.
Student parking lot, you'll see traffic, but arriving by 2:30. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, Council, we are back in the, going through our agenda. We just finished our conditional use public hearing for the Sheets application. And we are going into our regular agenda for next Tuesday. There will be minutes that we will consider for the Citizens Night Meeting of September 2nd, 2025. Once again, this is not a voting meeting, but what we will consider for next Tuesday is the Citizens Night Meeting of September 2nd, 25, the Council Work Session Meeting of September 2nd, 25, and the Council Regular Meeting of September 9, 25. Any questions about, or comments, or additions, corrections for those minutes? Hearing none. The reports of the tax collections that we will consider for next Tuesday. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. List of bills and budget transfers, Council, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Moving on to the payroll report, any questions or comments? Once again, all these items will be considered at next Tuesday's regular council meeting to be voted on. Sixth item is the capital improvement program, list of purchase orders to be approved for this month. It is there in your packet. Any questions or comments about those? Hearing none. And once again, that's part of the greater capital improvement program that we approved.
Are these things already bought?
No.
No, they're just waiting for your approval.
Yeah, we've, we've added an additional step. We approved the capital improvement budget and program, and then Council added an additional step that individual items need to be approved, which we can see how this goes. I'm, I'm curious if there's going to be any kind of issues with this as far as delaying items and timing and... So let's just monitor if this is the best way to do it or if it's a matter of really being a management-type situation. Ultimately, yes, it comes in front of us to be approved ultimately with a list of bills, but doing it this way, we have to wait a month for something to get on, or departments need to wait a month, an extra month to get it on here. Then we approve it, then they, it just seems a little convoluted to me, but that's for us to...
Well, let them put it a month early then, and we won't have that problem.
Well, that's, that'd be an option. Yeah, absolutely. That'd be an option.
Mayor, can I add one thing?
Yes, Mr. Healy.
On the list, on the list, it says Public Works Traffic Signals. It says four traffic signal controllers for $17,000. That's a grant, so we'll get 80% of that back. So we'll be receiving about $13,700 in return, although we have to put up the $17,000 ahead. We'll get money back.
We have reimbursed.
Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
Question, question. On these four vehicle maintenance portable lifts, we already have four. Is this additional or is that replacement?
Replace, all these are replacements.
Replacements?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of them are delayed. I mean, that's one of the issues we talked about, I talked about with Alex with the, like for example, the wing mower. It's a one-year lead time for a wing mower. That's, you know, that's why we have to get these in the queue. Next month, I'll have some more trucks to be purchased. Those trucks are two-and-a-half to three-year lead times. So that's one of the things, getting this in the, in the queue and get them ordered.
Is that what we pay for? We got to pay for them when we order them?
No, you pay for them when you receive them.
When you receive them?
Correct.
Okay.
Council, any other questions about the capital improvement program purchase list? Very good. Now, we do have our development applications. We did have a very lengthy discussion regarding the, the site, the site plan and the conditional use for the Sheets property. Both of those were basically contained within the, the public hearing. Once again, they'll be back in front of us next Tuesday for consideration. Moving down to number nine, we have a subdivision approval, 25-4-SUB Ronald and Annette Cappuccio.
Cappuccio.
Cappuccio. So the applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval pursuant to the Monroeville subdivision and land development ordinance number 2525 to consolidate tax parcels 742-C-347, which is .181 acres, and 742-C-350, which is .117 acres, into one lot with a total acreage of .298 acres. The property address is 412 Hazel Nut Drive in the R2 Single Family Zoning District. And the Planning Commission recommends approval of this application. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Council, good evening. I am here to ask if you approve my consolidation of my property at 412 Hazel Nut.
Okay. And you have, Mr. Wildin, anything from the municipal standpoint?
It's a very simple subdivision consolidation. Mr. Cappuccio has owned both lots for a long time. He just wants to combine them and make that common property line disappear, so he has just one large property.
I purchased a property, I bought, I moved into Monroeville in 98. They were supposed to consolidate all this for me. When I signed all the paperwork, they didn't do it. So it was just two parcels.
So in 98, you bought both?
Yes, yeah. That's when I moved in, and then that's when I bought everything, you know, and moved in there. And they were selected, they were supposed to consolidate all that, make it one parcel. They never did it.
So Paul, quick question. The .298 that it becomes, meets all the requirements or anything he wants to do with the property?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it just makes it easier because right now he, it looks like he owns one large lot, but there's a property line in the middle of it. So if he wants to put a shed or something up, it creates another setback in the middle of his property. So by eliminating that middle property line, it actually gives him more flexibility.
Well, and he couldn't put a shed up on, on the property where there's not a residence now anyway.
Correct. You're not allowed to have accessory structures without a primary structure.
Exactly. So that's why I asked. But, okay, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, great. But, so this will be considered for next Tuesday, and then, just a matter of, of some clerical stuff, we can move, move this item up above, move this to number seven. So they were very patient tonight as far as the Sheets discussion. But let's move that up, Council. Make number nine actually number seven as far as the first development application.
I agree with you.
Very good. Well, good luck with your project. We'll...
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you.
Sorry about being here all night.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'm going to bed now.
Council, moving to our resolutions. One to consider for this month. One to consider for this month. Dr. Lang, please.
That would be a resolution authorizing the distribution of the 2025 General Municipal Pension System, aid pursuant to the Municipal Pension Plan, Act 205 of 1984.
Council, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Moving on to reports of municipal staff. Mr. Ratcher, anything this evening?
I'm going to move on. I pass.
Thank you. Dr. Lang, anything this evening?
Just very briefly, Jared does have a flyer for us to stick up on the screen, just noting that this weekend is the 2025 Drive-Thru Recycling Event. So, if, you know, you have anything to recycle, you can contact the Public Works Secretary. She can help you determine what you can bring, what you can't bring, and if you have any questions, just reach out to the municipality.
Very good. Mr. Hugus.
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Rock.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, reports for council members. Mr. Higginson.
I have nothing, sir.
Stephenson.
I have a quickie. Our country and our state are in deplorable conditions. They can't even pass a damn budget. You know, what, what the hell is going on in this country? This is ridiculous. You know, the, the budget was presented to the state over two hundred days ago, and they can't work that out. I mean, it's ridiculous. Call your congressman from the state and your legislator from the state and tell them to get off their butts and pass a budget. Now, we can't do that to the federal, because they won't listen anyway, but they might if the state let. So, that's all I got, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Crutt.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Adams.
I doubt that we don't pass our budget on time either. No, I do, I do want to bring up about the animal control policy, about maybe getting some language changed in that for the pickup of traps, and maybe when Alex gets back, he can get something wrote up that we can agree on.
Okay. And that'd be in the, Mr. Ratcher, would that be procedure, or would that be resolution?
Well, it, it could be either. The fact of the matter is, it's just a policy matter. Yeah, it can be done administratively, and then Council, if they want to, can just bless it at the next meeting, the next business meeting. It doesn't have to be something that, you know, we have to adopt a formal resolution, because my, my recollection is, is that we just tinkered with it. We didn't pass an ordinance.
There was no resolution.
No, just an administrative change of policy. Just an internal policy.
Well, if there's time for whenever Mr. Graziani gets back, and next Tuesday, we could discuss it and even bring it up at next Tuesday's meeting, and Council could act on it if it's just a policy change.
Yeah, just have a motion and say, you know, motion to adopt the change to the policy.
Okay, very good. Mr. Williams.
No report tonight.
Somebody called dispatch.
Dennis don't know what to eat.
I'll take his time. Hell froze over. I, I do have one thing, very briefly. Jared, do you have the, the election? So, the municipal election's coming up, and Allegheny County is once again going to have their, thank you, their return site at Boys Park, the Four Seasons Lodge, and you can see the dates and times are there, October 31st and Monday, November 3rd are 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the first and second of November. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Biondo. And, yeah, along those lines, though, because of Election Day, our November, our November Citizens Night and the agenda-setting meeting is going to change to that Thursday, November 6th. Usually, we have a regular council meeting, which is the second Tuesday of the month. The Citizens Night is the first Tuesday. No, that's, that's the third Tuesday. Your November's filling up real fast.
Yes, it is.
So, actually, the, the Citizens Night for November, the first week of the month, we will be having it on Thursday instead of Tuesday, because that Tuesday is Election Day. But, we will have that posted everywhere. It'll be on our social media, it'll be on the website, with just a reminder to everybody. And then, this month is trick-or-treat at the end of the month, Friday, October 31st. We will have trick-or-treat on Halloween, as we always do, at least as long as I've been mayor. The next guy can decide what he wants to do, but it's always Halloween night, 6:00, 8:00 p.m. It doesn't change, doesn't, oh, it's going to rain, we'll move it up a day or back a day. No, we stick it, it's on Halloween night. Fortunately, this year, it is on Friday, but that is at the end of the month. 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. is when trick-or-treating is. And, and then just a quick, I just want to wish my wife a very happy anniversary this month in October.
All right.
She's, she's not watching, but tell her I said something.
How many years? How many years?
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two years. Twenty-two too many.
Motion to adjourn. You'll pay for her. You'll beat up one out one. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.[1773.33]